I'm glad you laid your stand flag. All right, we have the adoption of the agenda and we have a motion. Oh, roll call, I'm sorry, I forget that every time, go ahead, James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the benefit of our audience, we're going to go ahead and do a roll call for the board. Of course, we had already had the meeting called to order. Mayor Owens, you are present?
Here.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Selby?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Eddie Mann?
Here.
Commissioner Richie Burke?
Present.
Commissioner Jason Borland?
Here.
And on line, we will ask for Commissioner Darryl Collins?
Here.
And Commissioner Christine Walker?
Here.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you have not only a quorum, but you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all members accounted for.
All present. All right, now we have the motion for adoption of the agenda.
Eddie Mann, I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
All right, is it second?
I'll second, this is Christine.
Okay, motion by Eddie, second by Christine, we have the adoption of the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute.
Aye.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll do this by roll call vote. Mayor Protem Selby, iron a.
Aye.
Commissioner Eddie Mann, iron a.
Aye.
Commissioner Richie Burke, iron a.
Aye.
Commissioner Jason Borland, iron a.
Aye.
Commissioner Darryl Collins, iron a.
Aye.
And Commissioner Christine Walker, iron a.
Oh, oh, aye, sorry, I had it on mute.
Thank you, thanks so much. Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous vote for adoption of the agenda.
All right, well, clarity of adoption of agenda approved. We have a presentation of consent agenda, move, who wants to make the motion of consent agenda?
This is Darryl, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Who's second?
Jason Borland.
All right, motion by Darryl, second by Jason, we have approval of consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By roll call vote, we'll ask for approval of consent agenda. Mayor Protem Selby, iron a.
Aye.
Commissioner Eddie Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Richie Burke?
Aye.
Commissioner Jason Borland?
Aye.
Commissioner Darryl Collins?
Aye.
And Commissioner Christine Walker, iron a.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, unanimous vote for the approval of the consent agenda.
All right, we have approval of consent agenda. We'll move on, presentations, all right, it's all up to you, James, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number five on the agenda, presentations, these are for information. Item number A, 5A, is the census presentation. We have on the line with us, Mr. Derek Durazio, he's a partnership specialist here in North Carolina for the United States Census Bureau. We have also out there, Mr. Durazio has provided some information on a slide regarding the town of Manio. Mr. Durazio, I believe we have you on the line.
Yes, sir, thank you, James. I'm going to try to share my screen, so you can see, oh, I'm sorry, I guess we can't do screen sharing, okay. So if you all can just refer to the printed slide that James provided to you, we'll be covering that tonight. My name is Derek Durazio with the U.S. Census Bureau. By way of background, I'm the regional representative for the 2020 census for all the counties in the Alabama region, including Dare County. I also cover Keratuck, Hyde, Camden, Pasquotank, and all the other surrounding counties and all the municipalities therein. So I cover the whole area, basically. I'm here tonight, I guess kind of with a last second sense of urgency, just to give you all an update of where we are with respect to the census of Manio and where we're going. Because our time is coming to an end here pretty quickly with respect to the 2020 census. So, looking at the first bullet point on the agenda, the current reported response rate for Manio, and this was as of July 30th, I don't think it's changed much in the first couple of days of August, but the current reported rate for self-response for the 2020 census is 34.3%. If you just Google 2020 census response rates, you'll see the map of the whole country and you can search from there and find Manio, and that's where I got that response rate from. So, you know, obviously, that's, 34.3% is not very high, given where we are in the census at this point. We started self-response back at the end of March, early April, and here we are now, and we're only at 34.3% reported response rate. Having said that, we've had some increase, we've seen in Manio lately. Over the past couple of weeks, we've had about a .6 percentage point increase. And that coincides with myself meeting with James and Michelle, and we went over some strategies that helped to hopefully increase response rates in Manio. So it looks like some of those things have been working recently with the .6 percentage point increase. That's among some of the highest, rate of increase we've had among any municipalities in the state over the past couple of weeks. So lately, we've had a little bit of an increase. But in general, what we're seeing across the state is, we kind of started off kind of strong when we first started self-response, you know, back in March, early April. But since then, unfortunately, we flattened the curve with respect to census response anyway. We haven't seen a lot of increase really across the state, which would indicate to us that, you know, the folks who are vulnerable responding to the census have, and now we're getting down to the folks of the hard to account populations. So that's typically folks that may not speak English, maybe lower income, maybe older senior citizens, maybe disabled folks, folks in rural counties, folks that live in apartments or public housing, or some type of, you know, more temporary housing situation. Families with young children sometimes don't respond, so these groups have been typically underrepresented before. That's probably who's left with still trying to respond to the census. Looking at the final 2010 reported response rate for Manio, and again, this is just taken right from our 2020 census response rate website, if you hover over Manio on the map, y'all were 23.3% in 2010 for self-response rate. So we've increased that, you know, by over 10 percentage points already. So we're doing better than 2010. Having said that, the focus of the census is and always has been on counting the year-round residents. Because the rule is, you're supposed to be counted, quote, "where you live most of the year." So, you know, if somebody lives in Virginia for, you know, eight months of the year, nine months of the year, and they just come to Manio for the summer, well, they should be counted in Virginia. So, you know, we're really trying to focus on counting the year-round residents. So, when they report the response rates on the website, they don't adjust for what we call vacant housing. But vacant housing includes the seasonal housing and the summer housing, so they don't adjust for that. If we make the adjustment for that and take out what we think to be the estimated amount of vacant houses that you have, or, you know, temporary housing, the seasonal housing that you have, and just count your year-round residents, we think that about 62% of the year-round residents have responded. So that's a lot better than 34.3%, when we're just looking at the year-round residents. However, it is the lowest percentage of year-round residents responded to of all six municipalities in Dare County. So all six municipalities of year-round residents are higher than y'all. If you go to Dare County's 2020 census website, just Google Dare County 2020 census, they've kind of broken these numbers down, where they've counted kind of the year-round residents in their own calculations. They've broken it down by different areas, so you'll see what, how they compare the different areas. But anyway, Manio is the lowest that we estimate of all the municipalities right now for counting the year-round residents. So, for the county as a whole, Dare County's at 34.5%, and again, that's as of July 30th, not much has changed since then. That's the reported response rate. So Dare unfortunately is 96, lowest out of 100 counties. The final 2010 reported response rate in Dare County was 45.6. So Dare County's off, you know, by about 10 percentage points from where we were in 2010. Of course, in 2010, we didn't have COVID-19 to deal with, you know, but we are off at that pace. But again, I want to emphasize that Dare County's rates look lower than they actually are, because when they're reported on the website, we do not adjust for that seasonal location housing. We just count that as a non-response. So typically, the reported rates for the coastal communities, and the mountains out west as well, some of the western counties, they're going to be much lower than the other counties. That's just the way they report the results. They'll go ahead and verify which houses are year-round and which are seasonal, and we put boots on the ground for our non-response follow-up, which is going to be starting here next week. So they'll go around to all the houses that have not responded and knock on doors. Once they verify that they're not year-round residences, then they'll mark them off as a vacant house for our purposes, and they'll come out of the calculation at that point. But for now, you know, the numbers look a little worse than they actually are, just the way they report them. But still, there's still a lot of room for improvement. So, as I mentioned, non-response follow-up, or NARFU, as we like to call it, some people call it NerFU, NARFU, that starts as early as August 11th, so it could be starting as early as next week. I say as early as, that's when we're starting in the state. It doesn't mean on August 11th, unless you help in Manio. We're going to go from August 11th, now it's going to be through September 30th. It was supposed to be October 31st, but they pushed that back, pushed it up a month, so it's going to be September 30th. So it starts next week in the state and goes until September 30th. So we will be in Manio sometime around August 11th, sometime on or after August 11th, to knock on doors from the folks that have not self-responded. Again, the way it'll work is we'll knock on every door that we don't have a response from, whether it's a seasonal house or a year-round resident. We'll verify if it's a year-round resident, if they haven't completed the census, we'll take the information from them. If it's a, you know, not seasonal house or a vacation home without a year-round resident, we'll mark it off as a vacant house, and then we'll move on. So the object is to count every year-round resident who was in Manio, who lives there most of the year. As of April 1st, 2020 is our reference date, so we want to try to count every person. And just so you know, the way it's going to work with knocking on doors from a safety perspective, they will, you know, knock on the door, they will step back six feet, they will have masks on. You're supposed to wear gloves as well, to have hand sanitizer. When the person comes to the door, they will remain at least six feet away, they will ask the questions, and then they will input the information on their census device, so the person will not, there will not be any direct, you know, contact with the person. There'll be conversation six feet away, you know, with a mask on, and following all the relevant protocols. The census workers who come to knock on doors will have a federal government photo ID badge, you know, around their necks. All their devices will be labeled with the census logo, they'll have bags that say census on there, devices with census. Their vehicles will have a placard that says census on there, so you'll be able to identify, you know, us as census workers. And if y'all could let your police know, you know, that we'll be out there as early as August 11th, so they know we're in the area, we'd appreciate that as well. But again, the last day to respond to the census, and the last day we're going to be knocking on doors right now, they're saying is September 30th, 2020. Of course, these dates could always change, as politics change, as the pandemic changes, other factors change. Right now, they're saying September 30th is it. So we only have but a couple of months here, really, to finish the census, and just about a week before we start knocking on doors, to try to increase those response rates. So there's some new data, if you Google this, you can Google 2020 census economic impact in North Carolina. You'll see some new data from MAKENC count, which that website is from the State Complete Count Commission, from the governor's office. They've worked with the State Department of Budget and some other folks to come up with what they estimate to be the annual economic impact with respect to the census, 2020 census. And what they, they break it down for each county, and what they're estimating for Dare County is over $67 million annual census economic impact in Dare County. That's annual, that's $67 million a year for the next 10 years. So we only do the annual census every 10 years, the next one's in 2030. So what they're estimating there is roughly about between $1,800 to $2,000 a person in government funding. Most of that federal, some state, is tied to the census in some way, shape, or form. More people you have, more money you get. So, that's why we want to count every single person in each county, in each city and town, to make sure you get that $2,000 per person, per year, for the next decade. So, not to be crass about it, but each person that we count or we miss is worth about 20 grand to y'all over the next decade. That's why it's imperative that every single person who lives in Manio year-round gets counted, so y'all don't get cheated out of any money or resources that you're entitled to. So that's where they come up with the economic impact figures from. Right now, they're estimating that there's about $910,000 across Dare County, you know, some of that in Manio, but across Dare County, potentially at risk due to non-response. Now, that was data as of May 31st, so it's a little better since then, but that was as of May 31st. They're saying it's potentially at risk if folks get undercounted. So, that's why there's kind of a sense of urgency here, to try to increase the response rates as much as possible before we're knocking on doors. And once we start knocking on doors, folks can still self-respond. The way it works is, once we knock on your door, if you haven't self-responded, we've got to get the information from you there on the spot. So if you want to avoid the knock, then you would self-respond. But what you'll see is, you know, we generally have more accurate counts, and with less chance of under, or less risk of an under-count, you have a higher self-response rate. Those counties with higher self-response rates generally do much better in the census than those counties with low self-response rates. So that's why we're trying to increase your self-response rate. But we will try to catch everybody while knocking on doors, to make sure everybody's caught. But, you know, we'll do the best we can with that. So, that brings us to our last bullet point, which is what can we do to increase self-response rates in Manio? This says over the next month, but it's really, you know, it's over the next week if you want to do it before non-response follow-up, and really over the next month or so, if you want to get done before September 30th, when the census is now supposed to end. But what can we do to increase self-response rates in Manio? Some of these things, like I said, I've talked to James and Michelle, we've already started doing some of these things, I believe, which has helped us increase the response rates. But I've got them listed here for you, I'll just mention a couple of points. Probably most urgently, I don't know if you've done this yet, but we found that, one of the advantages I have in dealing with all the other counties and municipalities is, I kind of see what works elsewhere, and I know what doesn't work. But I can tell you what's worked elsewhere is utility bills. So if y'all haven't done this yet, I think it's urgent that you get a little blurb on your utility bills that says, hey, it's time to respond to the census, avoid the knock, here's the website, and importantly, here's the phone number. Because a lot of people don't have access to the internet, or they might not have a smartphone. They call that phone number from a landline and respond as well. Anyway, you give them a little blurb on your utility bills, that will drive up your response rates, I guarantee it, if you can get that out there on your utility bills the next round. Social media, your website, if you have emails, text lists, if you make robocalls to emergency management or through the schools, that helps. I've provided some specific demographic flyers to James and to Michelle, to kind of distribute as needed. If you have relationships with employers, including yourself to the town of Manio, getting a blurb on people's pay stubs or in their paychecks, or out to your employees, again, similar to the utility bills, hey, it's time to come respond to the census, here's the website, here's the phone number to respond, avoid the knock. That helps if you get out with your employers. Apartment complexes or public housing, condos, homeowners associations, get them the flyers, let them put them right on people's doors with the information about how to respond. That will work if you get those flyers directly on people's doors or in their boxes, if you have any kind of, you know, contained living situations. Churches, if you have food distribution sites, COVID-19 testing sites, again, getting those flyers and information out at those sites. Those are typically your hard-to-count populations that I mentioned earlier. Those are the folks that frequent those areas, and you will find that they, you will reach those areas at those particular places, food distribution sites, COVID-19 testing sites, and so forth. So get the information out there. Y'all can set up your own census assistance sites, you can say, hey, if you need help completing the census, come to Town Hall, make an appointment or not, or just come in, we'll help you complete the census. That has helped, that has worked in other locations, you know, to provide help to folks that might not be able to do the census themselves. Some places are providing incentives, you know, hey, if you complete the census, you know, come to Town Hall, complete the census, show us your code that you completed the census online, you get a $10 gift card, or you get a free hot dog, or you get whatever sponsor we have to give a surprise or something, to make it worthwhile for the person to respond. Some places are doing that. That will definitely increase your response rates if you can do that. But there's not a lot of time to pull it off right now. But anyway, that's the kind of things that we've found that do work to increase response rates. Again, I've already shared those information with James and Michelle, and I think we are doing some of these things. But with that, that's my last talking point. Again, I would refer you to the Dare County 2020 census website for more information. And I would just leave you with, you know, take your questions, but I would leave you with just, you know, what we do now over these next, next week, over this next month or two, prior to September 30th, is really going to reverberate for the next decade for the town of Manio. If we can get everybody counted, you'll get that money and resources that you need. If we have an under-count, that's the kind of stuff that's going to haunt you for the next decade. So I know you've got a lot of competing priorities right now, a lot going on, but I would urge you, this is the time, the last chance you're going to have for the next 10 years, to really prioritize census response. Get your response rates up, and get everybody counted, so we don't regret this for the next 10 years. So that's all I have, and I'm happy to take any questions that y'all may have.
Welcome to the presenter's place.
Yes, the presenter in this case is Mr. Derek Durazio, partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau.
Can you repeat that statistic? I think you said it was, was it $20,000 each?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, the way it works roughly, each person in North Carolina is worth anywhere between $1,800 to $2,000 a year in government funding. That's based in whole or in part on census distribution. So if you multiply that by 10 years, each person's worth about 20 grand in government funding. Most of that's federal funding, but there is also some state funding that's distributed on a per capita basis. Some of your sales and use tax, your hotel tax, your alcohol tax, anything that's distributed on a per capita basis will be reflected, you know, will be based on census data as well. But there's over 132 different federal programs that are funded based on census data, and that's where we're getting that, most of that money from. So the more people you have, the more money you get for most of these federal programs. It's things like school funding, Medicaid funding, a lot of your food security programs, a lot of your funding for your roads and highways, a lot of your grants, pick your nonprofit of choice, but a lot of your grants is based on per capita distribution. So a lot of that stuff is just, it's based on how many people you have, that's where we come up with that figure from.
Not just money, but doesn't the census also affect districting maps for federal and state officials?
Yes, sir, I'm glad you brought that up. The other half of the piece of puzzle we say is more people you have, not only more money you get, more political power you have. Essentially, the census does two things politically. One is apportionment, so this is very important to the governor, but we think we can pick up another seat, or possibly two, in Congress, in the House of Representatives, with kind of everybody we think we have in the census. And that's important, because we will pick it up at the expense of another state. So that's really important for our federal political power as a state, which is why the governor's all over this. But it's also, you know, more immediately, you hear a lot of problems and questions about gerrymandering, you know, across the state. But what happens is, we will provide the census data to the state board of elections at the end of the census, so sometime at the end of 2020 or 2021, but then the state will redraw the voting precinct lines in 2021, based on the census data. So if people are concerned about gerrymandering and getting the lines drawn fairly, they need to get counted in the right location across the state, to give the state board of elections that data that's needed to draw those voting precinct lines fair, and that's called redistricting. For most people, the money's a big selling point, most common people. Usually, that gets them hooked on responding to the census.
Thank you, Mr. Durazio, and I will, I will just add, before we go to the next item, that the town is continuing to do many of these items that are intended to encourage response rates of our residents here in town. Signs, websites, social media. But as my, as my elected officials remind me, not everybody's on social media, not everybody is on our website, so we're trying other ways of doing it. So, for example, so if anybody's listening around town, they may see a big banner that was loaned to us, and we'll be putting it in different neighborhoods in town, on town-owned property, such as Cartwright Park, Maritime Museum, Magnolia Pavilion, and other town-owned properties. So, we'll definitely do our part to encourage folks to fill out the census.
Thank you. If I could add one last thing, just to make a personal plea to the commissioners, and really anybody else listening. If you can just personally engage with your constituents, you know, your colleagues, your friends, your family, just personally engage them at this point. Tell them, look, I did the census, took me five minutes, it's very easy, and it's very important for our future. Go ahead and take the time to do it. If you can personally do that on your own social media, through your own word of mouth, however you want to do it, personally engage, now is the time to do that. So I'd ask you all to take a personal interest in this over the next few weeks, and get folks to respond to the census. And that's all I have, I'm available at any time anybody needs anything with the census. James and Michelle have my contact information, thank you for having me, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Item number 5A, 5B on the agenda, this is the town of Manio website. Presenting here will be Mr. Carl Woody, the IT department head here at the town of Manio.
Well, I am pleased to announce that we have met the deadline of July 31st to deploy our new website. So, let me give you a little bit of history. When I came on board, there was a contract already signed with a company called Granicus. The contract was signed with their old platform. Well, working with Granicus, I'm not going to deploy a product on an old platform, so we had to renegotiate, which we did, came up with a new, their new platform, which is called Vision. As far as the design, we had a website team that worked together to do, visit a lot of different websites. We went to our old website, and there were some stats we could pull, so we pulled the analytics from that, and we found out that there's three main pages that were constantly hit. The webcams, the news, and the calendar. Those were the three most popular webpages hit. So, we took that into mind as far as the design. The other design is the accessibility. We wanted to be able to provide a product for someone that may be vision impaired, that can use a tool that can help them be able to read or hear the website. And with that said, the biggest thing that we wanted to do is, we wanted to be able to tell our story. If you've visited our old website, you may have gone to Public Works, and there was just a one little page. It didn't tell our story. We wanted to be residents That's what we tried to do with this website. So, looking at the main page, we put a link up here for live cams. So that was the number one hit of our website. So it's an easy one-click to be able to get to the live cams for them to see. The next is events and news, all on the main page, easy for those end-users to be able to get to. We also integrated the accessibility. This is a little app that goes on there, so if you have somebody that can only see certain colors, you can change the colors. They can change the colors to whatever fits them. There's a lot of other different things in there. So we had that accessibility module. Looking at the main page here, we have, this is called like our hero image, so we've got like four images throughout town that are constantly scrolled through. These will probably be updated every quarter, depending on what's going on and so forth. Here, we have what's called a spotlight article. So, if they tap on this, what it does, it brings the video to the person, it makes it easier for them to watch, they can just hit play, and it's going to start playing. If they're done, they can just tap anywhere, they're back to where they were. They don't have to hit the back button, scroll, whatever, so it just makes it easier for the end-user to be able to navigate. Scrolling down, here we've got our news and events, one click takes you wherever you need to go. We've got more events for each one of those, so if you wanted to see some older ones. Now, here's a new function that we have, it's called a quick look. So this counts out, you know, citizens, year we've been established, median home values and revenues. The big part down here is the interactive visual budget. This is a visual budget that allows the end-user to be able to see, where's my money going? Where's the money that the town gets, and where's it going? So we have three enterprise funds, so the general fund, they can click on it. This is what's approved, how much they spent year-to-date, and they can sit there. And if they go to finance, they can tap right here, it sorts down here, it says, okay, finance, banking, soft costs is this much, operational, outside services, personnel costs, property, capital costs. So, it's an easy way to let the residents know where the money's going. But if the person does not like the visual, they can go to the old way, which is also there, which is the approved budget ordinance. It's just a static page of what was approved. Now, one other thing that we wanted to do is, when a person clicks on department, you can see all the different departments and all the different pages underneath it, but if they click on, let's go to Public Works. We've got a picture up here, we've got basic information. On every page that we have, we have this third column here, which is a contact. I don't know if you remember on our old pages, it was really hard to find a contact number. So where were they at? If they're in Public Works, it's going to have a number for Public Works. If they're in Water and Sewer, it's going to have that number. If they're in Planning, it's going to have the planning number. But it's an easy way for somebody to be able to contact without having to go back, back, back to find it. So this column here has all the location, it's got a resource tab that may, specific resources that may apply to that department can be department can be listed there. And then, here's our story. This is where we can say and talk, what does Public Works do? You know, pages on, you know, sanitation services, bulky items. If you go to Water and Sewer, they have a bunch of information on water leaks, water quality reports. These were pages that we did not have in the old system. So this is just information that we can provide them to tell our story. That's the basic overview of the website. Um, I'm going to give you a couple stats here, just to give you a little idea of what was involved with this. Um, there's a total of a hundred and ninety-two pages that we had to create. That means content, people writing them, proofing them, reproofing them, everything's good to go. Um, we've got over four hundred and ninety images that are on this website, two hundred and ninety documents, forty-one FAQs, and fifty-nine news, um, content articles. But here's another interesting thing. Um, I went back, all the emails that we sent to the designer and so forth, um, totaled up to four hundred and sixty-five emails back and forth with the designer to get something that we wanted. So, a little tidbit there, and I, I got one more little tidbit I'm going to show you. This is, uh, Google Analytics. This page has only been up for less than a week. Um, actually, if you look right now, we've got seven people on our site right now. Interesting. But here's an interesting stat right here. Location. Every, everywhere we see a color, somebody's hit our website. So we've got United States, Canada, Germany, Switzerland, United Kingdom, Japan, Bermuda, France, India, and Norway are the top ten. Interesting. I didn't know that. Um, if we hit, scroll back down here. If I hit the United States, every state except for two, North Dakota and New Mexico, has visited our website. Interesting stuff. And that is all I have. Any questions?
This is great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Oh, one last thing, I want to give the-
Who did you pick her?
Uh, it was a combination of staff, and, uh, we had a, uh, Coleman shots, is that? Yeah, Coleman shots, dudes, like the aerials and some of the scenic pictures and so forth. Yeah, they did a very good job. Um, I want to give a big thanks out to everybody, department heads, Melissa, Michelle, James, which was the core website team, working together, putting all the time to go over again and again to make sure that content is just perfect, because we didn't want to deploy something that was not a good product. So, I want to give a big thanks out to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number five C on the, on the agenda. This is an update on utility programs under COVID nineteen. Now, we have this in two parts, but I'll start with some overall data. When COVID nineteen first hit, and we were still in phase one of the restrictions from the state, uh, there was, it was certainly skyrocketing unemployment and, uh, you know, a very dismal economic picture there. Uh, this board took very quick action to, uh, provide relief to folks. Uh, even before the governor, uh, Governor acted, this board, the Town, Town Board of Commissioners, uh, suspended utility disconnections and wanted to find ways to help the residents in this jurisdiction. So, uh, my, my hat's off the board. Now, we're, we're in phase two of the, of the, of the governor's order, and, um, we, we are looking at what data we have, what's happening in our community. So in terms of our water and sewer billings, right as of July thirty-first, we have past due balances of twelve thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy-four cents. That's on the residential side. On the commercial side, it's eight thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. Interestingly enough, uh, the combined total there is less than twenty-one thousand dollars. Now, we know that each one of those folks who are, are dealing with difficult economic times, there are still some businesses shuttered under the current, uh, under the current state plan, and some folks who are either still without a job or who've reduced hours or otherwise impacted by the coronavirus, COVID nineteen, public health emergency. So, um, there are a couple next parts. So, uh, C one says payment plans under executive orders one twenty-four and one forty-two. So that's, uh, in, under the exec, those executive orders, which just expired, um, we're required to give residents six month, up to, you know, six-month payment plan, a minimum six-month payment plan, to get their past due balances caught up in current. Um, right now, the governor's order does not include commercial businesses. However, this board took a more expansive approach and also wanted us to have the ability to offer those payment plans to our local businesses as well, to help them through this difficult time. So we have, um, we have, uh, ready, ready with, as our next, as our billing cycle has just gone out, uh, you'll have in your package the, a payment plan. So this is a payment plan. It's both an application and an agreement, and it's in the, in the board packages, and it's available at Town Hall for anybody who wants it. We tried to keep it simple, just one page front and back to just explain the payment plan, have folks agree to it, and to track it as we go through the six-month process, so that our finance department will track those payments and help folks get caught up. Uh, but this is, um, this not only complies with the governor's executive order one twenty-four, this, this actually goes above and beyond to help the people here in town. So if, our, our staff are already calling, reaching out to call to those folks who have those past due balances and making this, this form of relief available to them. Second, the second item you'll see here, it mentions the Manio Resident Relief Fund. Now, this is another action that the board took that was, um, even higher level to help support the community. This is, and what, we, we understood after talking to the board, what the board approved for this and appropriated up to a hundred thousand dollars if it was needed. Um, right now, obviously, that full amount is, is not, not going to be needed, but it, it was there. This application, we understood, we wanted, that the board wants to make it flexible, make it easy for folks to document, not make it a, a massive undertaking, but try and help people who need it the most. So we've got a single pay, a single application here. There's a copy of it in the board packets, and it's also available here at Town Hall for anybody who might need it. But we simply go explain the program, get their contact information, have them document how COVID nineteen impacted them, um, and they can do that in any number of ways, say a layoff notice or a letter from their employer or whatever it might be. Uh, of course, they need to declare the date. They understand that, um, you know, they're applying for it, that it is limited to five hundred dollars per household, that was the maximum, and there's a maximum on the program too. Um, in terms of, we also want to make sure folks understand that, um, they are applying for this information, and to, there is, there is some question as to how much of this information is protected under North Carolina general statute. So we must understand, there may be, there is a possibility for a public records request as to who applied for this or received what amount. So we'll make sure we, we follow the statute, uh, accordingly and try, and not release per, the, the personal information that is allowed to be protected, but we also want to comply with the Freedom of Information Act and the public records rules under the general statutes. Um, the three, and just in case anybody's listening, the, the, really, the, the three eligibility requirements were, do you reside it within town limits? Number two, is the location above your primary residence? And number three, have you been impacted financially by COVID nineteen? Just in case any of your, I, I knew you have constituent, constituents out there, um, there may, questions may come up. Uh, we have a tiny, a, a, the, the vast majority of our customers do live within town limits. So it, it, but there are a few people who live just outside of town where water was extended in years past, so there may be a few of those folks who may not be eligible under that. Also, the goal of this was to help offset impacts from COVID nineteen, the loss of income or exten, or additional expenses due to COVID nineteen, and trying to be flexible in adapting to that. Um, we have had a couple of calls where folks just said that they, um, well, they didn't lose their jobs because they have, you know, a pension or social security or something like that. So those pensions or social security haven't been impacted by COVID nineteen, so they may not be eligible. However, in the future, should the board decide to find some kinds of programs for low to moderate income people, there are other programs that the board could look at, at that time. So if that's a policy thing that the board would like us to look at, uh, we're happy to do that. I just want to make sure that it's, you know, if you have constituents coming up to you, that we are following the eligibility criteria that were laid up, that were laid out previously.
James, did you, did you say there's a, for commercial, is a water plan for commercial, sec, the six-month plan?
Yes, sir. That was a, that was a six-month payment plan, which was the same, basically the same payment plan as, as the residents are eligible for.
It is commercial, too.
Yes, sir.
Hey, James, this is Darrell. Uh, how many people have, uh, applied for the Manio Resident Relief Fund?
Um, at present-
Anybody yet?
Yes, sir. At, at present, we haven't had any application because it's just, it's just happening now. Uh, this, this, it just, we just passed the, uh, the end of July deadline where the governor had that order, and so it's this billing cycle that just went out. So our staff, um, led by, uh, the Finance Department, the, their leader is, uh, Shannon Twitty, and Kim Espinoza there at the front desk, she is the one who is, will be calling these folks. And as soon as we find out who, uh, who needs that, we'll make sure to get an application in their hands.
Any questions? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number five B on the agenda. This is an update on committees and recruitment. This particular topic comes about from some discussions at the board o, on a number of topics, ranging from, uh, special, from special event committees, uh, potential advisory, uh, potential advisory board, as well as recruitment for those committees and boards. Um, I'll start, I'll start at a higher purpose. Rather than jumping straight into, rather than jumping straight into the committees, I will, um, I will refer our, our listening public that if they go into the, the Town of Manio's, um, Town of Manio's Code of Ordinances, it actually talks about the board and the boards and committee, the Board of Commissioners, and the boards and committees that it appoints. Um, so those are laid out there. Now, the board does have the ability for a time-limited project or a, say, for example, a task force or a, you know, a blue ribbon committee, if those are time-limited, the board has a lot of, of flexibility in terms of appointing those for that short duration. However, if there's a longer term, if there's a standing committee that's going to continue to do business into the future, um, it's best to have that, um, actually outlined in the Code of Ordinances, just like we have the Planning and Zoning Board, the Cemetery Board, and other, other entities that, that serve this community. Now, um, we have two committees to, to kind of get some feedback on tonight. I know this is for information only, but would love to get some feedback from the board as we get through. So let's talk about two. I'll, I'll start with one, the Special Events Committee. So at present, the Special Events Committee has been, been, been talked about for years. There have been appointments to it, and it, but it does need to be reconstituted. Right now, it's not listed as a formal committee within the, uh, within our Code of Ordinances. So if the board would like to proceed with that, I would recommend that we go ahead and formalize that, but also as we reconstitute.
Reconstitute.
We've actually been getting applications in, including, uh, some that have been, been actually recruited by members of our Board of Commissioners, and, um, we do have things to talk about. Now, when we had our last community conversation, pre-COVID world, um, we talked about, one of our community conversations was about the Special Events Committee. And on the one hand, there may be a desire for an overall Special Events Committee, maybe to meet quarterly, um, to talk about overall strategy for events and how do they impact the town, and, you know, engaging stakeholder groups like the citizens and like businesses, et cetera. But what we also found in that, that community conversation is that there are groups of people that just want to work on one event. They just love the Christmas events, that's the thing they want to do, and they want to volunteer for that, but they don't necessarily want to sit through a quarterly committee on other topics. And, and honestly, we, we're just thrilled, thrilled to have folks who want to do both, but, but either or both. We're, we're happy to have that engagement. Um, but at, at present, it, it seems, it seems likely, based on what we've heard from the board and from the public, there's still a need for an overall Special Events Committee that perhaps meets quarterly, helps give guidance, and especially in this COVID world, try and determine what we can do as crowd gathering restrictions and, and we're already making plans for the Christmas, like Christmas events. We want to make sure we work through the different plans there. So if there's a desire of this board to, to go ahead, reconstitute that, that committee, we can go ahead and bring the language back at the, at the, so that there's some possibility. Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, look around to the, to the board and see if there's interest in that?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Yep, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I didn't know until several months ago that the Events Committee was not a regular constituted part of town government, and I think it should be. I agree with Richard and Jason.
Okay. Great. Thank, thank you, and thank you for the feedback. So we'll go ahead and, and bring that back to the board at the September meeting. Now, there's also another potential committee. Now, this one is, is one that it's, it, there was a committee in the past, and, um, but it, it has since, uh, it's since fallen by the wayside some, a few years ago. And it, it could be called by different na, different names. One name that's very commonly used in other jurisdictions is a, a Community Police Advisory Board, and oftentimes those will meet on a quarterly basis. Um, if we want to give it a fun acronym, we could call it Law Enforcement Advisory Panel, or LEAP. Um, the, the reason I want to make, uh, the reason this has come up is that I think there's an opportunity here because we have an organization in the Manio Department that talks about community-oriented policing. And I think it's particularly important, though, to take that community policing to the next level and enhance what they do. I mean, we can improve the programs and services that are delivered to the community by talking to the community. Are the programs and services desired? Are they meeting the needs of the community? And, because we can always do better, we can always have process improvement. So I think this is something, uh, a, a committee whose time has come back again. It may have disbanded a few years ago, but this may be a good possibility for us to do it. And I did want to engage the board, though, before we took any, that would become a policy decision, it would have to be added, just like the Special Events Committee. So if this group desired for us to start considering that or putting it in place, we could bring that back to the board in September with the language on how it would meet, et cetera. So I'm curious to see if the board would like us to proceed with something like that.
Much favor.
This is Darrell. Uh, we talked about it, uh, a month ago, James, about the, uh, Police Advisor Committee, and I think it's a good idea to start another one. It, we, the town used to have one a long time ago, but I think it's a good idea.
Being a past member of the one that we had a while back, I served on it, and I think it, we do need to bring it back. Not only that, we got some good relationships built, um, between the police and residents. Good ideas. Um, they felt very involved, so yes, I certainly hope that we do that.
Yeah, I think just, I mean, we've got a good thing going on, so you don't have to wait until, or not that, it would, but you know, just because we're not in a bad situation doesn't mean we need to put something there to fix it. We can do it now when things are good, and it's something to help. Never get that way.
I, I think it's very important to do. I, uh, think it should be a very diverse group, and, um, also equally a partnership between that group and the police department, so they can, they can problem solve together. And ultimately, the police officers serve the community, so they need to know, uh, what areas the, the community's concerned about and how to address those areas. So I think it's very important.
Well, it's, it sounds like there's some desire for us, go ahead, move forward. So we'll bring that, bring the simple post-
I think just move, move forward with both of them.
Yes, sir, we'll do. Um, one other little item that I, if, if we're bringing back some language on this particular section of the code, one thing I might suggest is that there is a rule in the, in the ordinance, and this board's had to deal with it. It states in, um, in our existing ordinance on committees, it says, "Should any member of any appointed board, commissioner, committee fail to attend two consecutive meetings, whether or not such failure is excused, his or her appointment shall be automatically terminated." Now, I know that, uh, this is something that the board has had in ti, in, in past times has had to perhaps reappoint someone who, through no fault of their own, or, or, you know, especially in this COVID world, someone gets quarantined for fourteen days, I'd hate to have them feel like I'm going to get, I better show up or I'll get kicked off this board. So I'm wondering if the board would have any problem if I also brought back language where we, we big, basically make it be, where the, the chair of that board would have the ability to accept an excused absence for a good reason. And I think if this board, if we appoint, not we, if this Board of Commissioners appoints a, a committee and a chair, I think we can expect that chair to be responsible in determining whether an excuse is reasonable or not. Um, but I, I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to be presumptuous and bring that to you without bringing it to your attention first.
Yeah, I'd say, and-
And James?
Go ahead, whoever.
Sorry, this is-
Go ahead, Christine.
It's Christine. Yeah. And so that, James, that's just for those two boards? Is that what you're saying?
Would, would that, would be the ability at the, at the, at, for that board chair to, to accept an, a, you know, an excused absence, should someone have a, an appropriate excuse for such absence, and that wouldn't just automatically kick them off the committee?
I think we could question-
Right. But, but you're saying just for the special events and for the, uh, the law enforcement, uh, committee? Right. But, but you're saying just for the special events and for the, uh, the law enforcement, uh, committee?
Then, and thank you for the clarif, clarification of yes. That would, that would apply, that applies to all of the boards, commissions, and committees. So that's kind of general language across all of them.
Right. So that, so this would be an exemption for those two only?
No, it would be for all boards and committees. So a board chair, whether it's Planning and Zoning Board Chair or Park or whoever, they would have the ability to accept an excused absence should they, should they find it appropriate.
Okay. I don't, I don't know how I feel about that for planning and zoning then.
No, I, I don't either, Christine. I don't like it. Uh, I think they should be here to, if you miss two meetings, you, you're gone regardless.
Yeah.
It should be our call.
Yeah.
The Board of Commissioners.
I mean, it's, yeah. I think it, it's too consecutive. Is it too consecutive?
Y- yes, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you know, when you're only meeting, you're only meeting 12 times a year. Um, I mean, that's, you know, that's 10 meetings a year. And I, I, you know, I'm okay with the others, but I, I think for planning and zoning, there should be, it shouldn't, we shouldn't have it, uh, an exemption.
Yeah, I don't think...
But that's just, that's just my feeling. I mean, of course, I know there's, you know, there's reasons for, you know, things, but...
I have a question.
And I think that we've been pretty liberal about, you know, reappointing someone if, if the circumstances, you know, circumstance arises. But, um, I mean, I think we should at least hold them to a, a little bit of a higher standard.
I have a question for maybe some language in the, uh, in the proposal that may help that out. Uh, planning and zoning gets some kind of compensation, correct?
Yeah.
So could it say, uh, that compensated board, uh, boards, other than compensated boards, I guess? Uh, maybe a way to, to clean up the wording in it. That way, compensated boards, like the Planning and Zoning Board, would still have to adhere to two meetings. And then voluntary boards such as, uh, um...
All the others.
All the others would, could have an excused absence, maybe.
I agree.
I agree. Oh, I, I can't vote.
No, I'm just saying, I agree with what you said.
Yes, it, it makes, it, that makes good sense to me. And what, what we can do is just go ahead and, and write it as such. It seems like an appro, uh, reasonable, appropriate compromise and, or not compromise, but a wonderful suggestion. And we'll bring it back so the board can consider it and we can, they can consider it as a item on September.
And that's the only board with compensation, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Uh, there's another, uh, the, uh, there's another board that gets compensated too, isn't it?
No, no, sir. Planning and zoning, but Planning and Zoning Board is compensated, but the others such as Cemetery Board, Park, and the others are, are not.
I'm out of the Board of Adjustments.
Uh...
I'm out of the Board of Adjustments. Thank you.
Oh, I think only they, I mean, only when they meet and I don't think they meet once every three years, maybe. Whenever they need to.
Great.
Is that, is that right, James? They have their own budget?
Yeah, um, they do. There is a budget line item for the group. And the town clerk has clarified that they receive a, a meeting, a meeting fee as opposed to, say, a monthly fee. Um, and I, but I do believe that that would be covered under Commissioner Mann's suggestion, uh, where we set it up as, um, other than compensated boards. So it sounds, and I can, we'll, I can, we'll get the exact language and bring it back to the board in September then.
I, I hate to interrupt, but I'm, I'm sitting out on my back porch on the Doce Creek and there is a porpoise out in the water. And so I'm, I'm, I'm just really amazed right now. It keeps like surfacing, sorry.
Perhaps our next Zoom meeting, we can have the video mode so you can turn the camera over to...
I'm trying to get a, I'm trying to get a, a picture and I can send it maybe, but, uh, yeah, I've never seen that before. So very interesting down here today.
Go to the website.
That's right.
All right, let's, let's move on, James.
Thank you, sir. Um, and the last part on the updates on community recruitment, we, the word recruitment. So there's been some robust discussion here, um, at the Board of Commissioners regarding, regarding recruitment for these boards, in case both the existing ones and potentially the ones that are proposed. So I, I do want, I, I think it's just wonderful to engage the community. Um, and we've been so lucky to have, uh, the dedicated service by so many board and committee volunteers over the years. And, um, it's, they have my thanks and gratitude. There, there are folks who are giving so much of their time and effort. Uh, we've had some volunteer folks in, in, just earlier today, having spent hours looking at plans. So we're very grateful for their service. Um, I, I, I do like this idea of like engaging the community on these boards. And I, when I say that, I want to be clear, all of the community. So I want to make sure we, we, we do need to consider representation and we do need to be attuned to issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We want to look at all, all dimen, all dimensions, of course. Um, so, you know, from a diversity standpoint, we, we need to look at our community and the, uh, uh, dimensions such as race, ethnicity, age, gender, and more as we look at the composite, our composition of our boards and committees. Uh, from equity standpoint, we will also need to consider as we invest, you know, invest in our community, you know, an equitable use of our resources, you know, for programs, services, um, you know, stormwater projects, whatever, you know, whatever it might be. Um, and you consider another dimension like geographic coverage. Make sure we have members from, you know, every neighborhood, you know, every neighborhood in town have that opportunity for folks to do that. And of course, inclusion. We want to have an inclusive environment. We, how often do we say we want to hear all voices? Well, this is probably the most concrete way we can have, have those voices heard and represented. So, um, we're, we're, we need to explain, expand our recruitment and I think towns, town, town, we can help. I know it's traditional to do things like social media postings and websites, uh, newspaper ads. But not everybody takes a paper. Not everybody's on social media. So we want to go beyond that. Um, some examples that we're suggesting are things like a, a Waterville. Well, every household has to get water, so Waterville reaches every household. We want to do not just a little note there, but an actual, uh, an actual mailer that explains, explains board service and has an application, makes it easy for folks. Um, we want to make, again, we want to make it easier for folks to, to get engaged. We also want to figure out how to get face-to-face in a COVID world. In, in a prior job, I used to, when I was working on a committee, I would knock, went door-to-door and knocked. And in, in this COVID world, I, I think, I think folks might be uncomfortable with someone just knocking on their door and showing up on their doorstep. So perhaps we could do some things like identifying neighborhood champions. So if we can identify some folks, whether they're elected officials, whether, whether they're elected officials who know someone within a neighborhood, um, we, if we can identify those champions who can help us get the word out, help us to recruit and share the info. Because we need to make sure folks understand this is not a, 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 a burden. It's, in many cases, just a few hours every quarter that they, that they would participate. But that service is so important. They can serve the community while reflecting the community. So those are some of the ideas that we, you know, that we had here. And we were hopeful this is to see some of your feedback either on those ideas or the addition of more as we want to make sure come September, if we get these committees rolling, we want to have our strategies in place and turn it loose the next day, in fact, even before then. Because I know a member of our board who's already got a stack of applications and has been taking him out of the community, which, which we appreciate.
All right, let's, let's move on with the agenda. Public comment.
Yep. Okay. Yes, sir.
You've got your marching orders anyhow, but form the clear and get it all, bring it back to us. You gonna bring it back in September?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Item number six, public comment. This is for information. Members of the public are invited to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourselves so that your statements can be reported. Now, uh, we'll, we have folks on Zoom and people have dialed in. We have, um, we have, um, five attendees at present. If you're an attendee and you would like to speak a public comment, please press star nine on your phone. That will raise your hand and our facilitator will rec, will recognize you by the last four digits of yourself. So for our five attendees, um, would any of you like to raise your hand by hitting star nine? We have two raised hands. We'll start with the first one that came up. The last four digits of this are zero, three, zero, two. That's a zero, three, zero, two. You're going to come unmuted now. Uh, if you go ahead and, uh, please identify yourselves so your statements can be recorded.
Yes, my name is Jim Contristan. I live at 213 Compton Street in Manio. I would, uh, I would like to thank the, uh, mayor and commissioners for considering the request of, uh, over 70 Marshes Light residents to, uh, accept the donation of our, of our boardwalk and easement. Um, many North Carolina coastal towns have beautiful parks along their waterfronts. Let's, uh, let's add Parkland, uh, add to the Parkland already available in downtown Manio by hiring an engineer to review our request. Thank you very much.
All right. As we're looking at the screen, we have another hand raised. The last four on this appear to be five, five, four, five. And a caller with the last four, five, five, four, five, you're about to be unmuted. If you could identify yourself so your statements can be recorded.
Uh, good evening. My name is Phil Huestad and I live at 209 Compton Street in Marshes Light. And, uh, Mr. Mayor and the commissioners, I'd just like to thank you for hearing the proposal on the, uh, Marshes, uh, Light donation of the, uh, boardwalk, uh, at the last meeting. Um, we have, uh, internal, uh, group, uh, email list that contains about 51 of our 70 residents. And, uh, we did a simple survey out to that group and the, uh, and got the 37 responses back with all the, all the respondents supporting the donation. So I share this information with you just so that you know that it's, there's strong, uh, support for the proposal within the Marshes Light community. And, uh, we hope that you will move forward with the study of the pro, the proposal in order to determine its feasibility. Thank you for your time.
All right. We're looking at, we're looking at the screen and, uh, there are no more hands raised. Is, if anybody else wishes to be heard, uh, hit star nine on your phone and it will raise your hand.
All right. Would anybody else like to be heard? Okay, we'll close public comment period.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number seven on the agenda is new business. This is for action. This is the approval of Resolution 2020-06. This is an intent to annex, annex property owned by the Town of Manio and scheduling a public hearing. Now, this, this, this particular agenda item, um, is, is about the Town of Manio property. This is vacant land across from the P. Island Cookhouse Museum on the roundabout at Sir Walter Raleigh and Bitterford Street. The town already owns a property, but it should be annexed into the town, so it's subject to our rules for, for planning, zoning, and other items. Um, and this is, this is an item where tonight the goal would be for the board to express its intent to annex and schedule a public hearing. We'll also make sure to notify the community. There will actually be a published ad going out in the, in the local newspaper to make sure folks hear about this intent to annex. So this is an item for action, Mr. Mayor.
I got a question. Is this the, uh, it's county right now, correct?
Yes, sir.
If I'm thinking the right property.
Yes, sir. It's, um, if you take Sir Walter Raleigh Street around, go around the roundabout, it's a Keep Her Etheridge statue. It's three quarters of the way around and it's bounded on one side by Bitterford Street and the other side by Sir Walter Raleigh as it goes out to the county.
Okay.
And, and it's a wooded property.
Thank you.
This is Darrell. We brought that a while back. So when we brought it, we, we still got annexed?
Yes, sir. Even though the town owns it and purchased the property, it's outside of our jurisdiction right now. Uh, so that's why I'm proposing to have it annexed into the town and be subject to our, our ordinances.
Okay.
It is currently adjacent to Town of Manio jurisdiction, correct?
Yes, sir.
So it's not like we're going out further to annex it, so it's touching town property or town jurisdiction?
Yes, sir.
What do we do tonight, James? Just start the process? Because it's got to be advertised and got to have public hearing also, don't you? Yeah.
Yes, sir. So the resolution tonight is to show your intent. It will schedule, the, the resolution already has the, uh, the, the public hearing being scheduled and we've got a...
Do you have to have approval of the board to move forward?
Yes, sir. We need a motion to approve Resolution 2020-06 and set the public hearing for September 2nd.
I, I got a question. Has it been, is, are we doing it now because of some interest in it or...
Um, no, ma'am. We're, we're just doing it now so that we have it under our jurisdiction. Um, any action we take on the property, whether it has to do with stormwater or ditches or trees or whatever, that will put it under our jurisdiction, so the county's.
I move to approve the resolution, um, 2020-6 fit to fit the public hearing for September 2nd.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by, getting second by any that we move forward with the approval of resolution, annex the property that we're talking about.
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead with the roll call on this. Uh, roll call vote to, to adopt the resolution. We'll start with, uh, Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mark, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you've got a unanimous vote for approval of that resolution.
All right. We have, you, you'll move forward with it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We'll take the appropriate steps. Next up on the agenda, sir, item number eight. This is for information. It's mayor and commissioners' comments.
I, I don't have any comments. Um, Betty?
I don't have any. Oh, wait a minute. Website looked good. Carl, Andrew, and it was all one y'all. It was wonderful.
Jason?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. The website looks great. Um, now, every week, every month when I'm checking to remember what time the meetings are, I know. That'll be quicker than digging through my emails. So, um, looks great. And I, I think the other thing was, um, with the boards, I think it's great and more public involvement. Um, one other thing I was thinking of while you were talking about that was, um, what we see, all the resumes and applications that are in there. You know, we don't want to lose old applications, but we do have, you know, basically 10-year-old applications in there. And so, um, just when the time comes to make those appointments, um, I don't know, figure out when, that we can clean them up and then make sure that they're accurate, um, while we do that too.
Thank you.
Carrie?
Yes, sir. Um, I know you talked about it before, uh, Mr. Manager, but some kind of cost study analysis by an engineer evaluation, Marshes Light, what that would cost. Uh, I know you brought it up before, but if you, uh, maybe next meeting, bring, make some kind of presentation for what it would cost. And then maybe some kind of a cost study and analysis of the boardwalk, of what it would cost to, um, maintain for the town. That way we can all have a, a better understanding of what the undertaking will be.
Uh, yes, I, thank you, Commissioner. We, we do have a cost for the study that would then tell us the, um, like the long-term costs and things like that. The, the cost of that was estimated by a qualified engineer who actually was out there walking it today prior to a meeting we had, uh, on another topic and estimated 20, uh, $2,800 was the fee for that, that study. Um, I believe he would have, if, if the board chose, chose to, um, have us move forward with that, it, I can't, I can't guarantee, but I think it could be done before the next board meeting in September. And I can double-check. I don't want to commit to him, commit to that yet, but he indicated he could do it fairly quickly.
That's all of that. Thank you.
Okay. Richie?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, give a big shout-out to the, the Public Works Department, what happened yesterday. They were out there like right after the storm and stayed late and worked late. I, I thank them a lot for doing that. It was good. It was, it was great downtown now, all over the town. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Darrell?
I don't have anything right now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Christine?
Yes, sir. Um, I just had a suggestion for the website. Um, I, we don't have like a group photo or I don't know that there's a photo of the commissioners. Um, I feel like the last one we had was from like 2013. So it might be, you know, worthwhile if we get a picture the next time we're together or everybody can submit a photo. I'm not sure. I mean, for people that don't even know who we are, but, you know, for them, if you, I mean, I know a lot of people in town just by, by faces. I don't know their names, but, you know, it might be helpful to get our picture out there to people. You know, they can approach us at the grocery store or wherever. But, you know, it might be helpful to get our picture out there to people, you know, they can approach us at the grocery store or wherever. You know, it just seems like a good thing to do. So if maybe we can somehow, Carl can, you know, make that, put that on his to-do list.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask the commissioner to clarify, we do have a photographer who can help us with that. Mike?
Yeah, I mean, that would be great. You know, I don't want, you know, I don't want to make it a expenditure of funds or any, you know, big, you know, purchase. But I just, again, think it's, you know, kind of a good idea to have our faces up there. At least a group photo if we were all together.
And I'm just gonna look around the group. I mean, we have the ability to either a group photo if everybody's together at the next meeting, or we could do individual photos and have them next to your, your, like, your email address on the website. But I want to look around the group and see what your preference is, because there are pros and cons to that.
Well, that's just my opinion, is that it helps me to know. I mean, I wouldn't know who, you know, some people are if I didn't see their pictures on websites or in the newspaper or, you know, other places. I just, you know, and I know back in the day, like I said, we had one, but it was from like 2013. So I just think it's time that we update it.
All right.
If, if no one wants their picture on the website, then, you know, I mean, we're commissioners. We, you know, we, we should be out there. We, we got to put our, you know, our face, our picture out there. I mean, we're, you know, we're doing the work. We need to, you know, let people know who we are.
If you figure a way out to make it like a group photo, if we could do that properly, properly, Photoshop.
We'll go ahead. And if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, what we'll do is we'll coordinate with the photographer and find out what alternatives are. Thank you.
Find out people's schedules and times when they're available, whatever.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else coming for the board? All right, we'll recess till August the 2nd, James.
Can we cancel it mid-March, end of October?
Huh?
Can we cancel that mid-March to August?
I thought, what?
Yes, sir. I'm happy to answer that. So right now, we don't have any business items scheduled for August 19th. So if the board, that came up last time with the board, if the board does want to meet in the August 19th, they'd just recess us. But if they want to cancel the August workshop, they just move to cancel the August workshop and then adjourn this meeting.
Well, you know, you know, last meeting, you said you had so much on this agenda, we were meeting today. So do we have anything for August, I mean, the 19th?
No, sir. No, sir.
Well, why don't we just, we still away with August 19th then.
Yes, sir. So if the motion is made to cancel the August workshop meeting and adjourn the meeting, we wouldn't meet until September 2nd at 6:30 p.m.
Yeah.
I'll move to cancel August workshop.
Do we have to have a motion on that?
Yes, I'll move to cancel August workshop meeting and adjourn this meeting till September 2nd.
September 2nd.
Right. Motion by Eddie, saying, I betted that we cancel or not meet at the workshop August 19th. And we will not recess, and we'll have a regular meeting in September.
Yes, sir.
What is that date?
And if you'd let me go ahead and do the roll call on that, sir, I'll do it right now.
Yeah, what, yeah. What is the date?
September 2nd at 6:30. So Mayor Protem Selby, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Burke, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Borland, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Collins, Iron A.
Aye.
Commissioner Walker, Iron A.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Mayor, you have a unanimous, unanimous vote.
All right, we will adjourn until September the 2nd, at 6:30?
Yes, sir.
6:30. All right.